Okay, from our meeting last week, we do have minutes from our public hearing back on March 28th, 2019, it's in the packet. As always, all this information is on our county website as well. Any corrections or issues with these minutes from the special call meetings? Hearing none will sign these into the record. We have our second public hearing that we had on March 28th as well. Any corrections or issues with those minutes? Hearing none will sign those into the record. And then we had our regular scheduled meeting as well on March 28th. We had the minutes from those processes and things that we implemented. Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none will sign those into the record. Okay, under our new business, first items that we have is our purchase orders, and we like to knock out a purchase order so our sheriff can speak first. He's got another commitment tonight, so he will not be with us very long. So we have a consideration for a purchase order 2019-500 for court services, for an x-ray inspection system for the Annex III. So Sheriff will ask you to give us a little more background or detail on that if you would, please.
Yes, thank you. This is for an x-ray machine that will go into this Annex here. The sheriffs in Georgia are statutory required and charged with carrying out security in the courthouses and the courthouses annexes in the state of Georgia. Some of you may remember from back in 2005, when the Fulton County incident happened with the judge, the court reporter, and several people were killed as a result of that incident. The legislature the next year charged all the sheriffs in the state, 159 of them, of carrying out that security of all the annexes and courthouses. So one of the things that we saw when we moved over here to this Annex III last year was that we had a walkthrough scanner, metal detector, but we did not have the capability of x-raying packages or book bags or women's purses and those type of things. So we were needing one here to upgrade our security standards here for this Annex here. And so that's what this is. It was, it's a budgeted item in our 2018-2019 budget for $23,000.
Eight hundred and fifty.
Eight hundred and fifty dollars. And it's in the budget, but I want to come in and speak to you and let you know exactly what that was for, be able to go in this operation here when we have court or as when it's deemed necessary to be utilized. I don't think for these meetings, Commissioner utilizes the walkthrough or probably won't be using the scanner.
Right.
Unless something requires it to be. But if court is in sessions, any type of court proceedings, it will be used, just like it is in the main courthouse currently.
Very good, thank you. Any questions on this purchase order? As always, any capital purchases over $15,000, that's out of the norm and ordinary of our normal daily operations, we always like to bring those to you before the public and verify to you how those funds are being invested to improve our county and also to verify that these funds are in the budget, and they are so. So no further question, we'll move and sign this purchase order and approve this purchase for this scanner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff, for being with us. We'll let him move on to his next event. Thank you. Okay, consideration of a purchase, excuse me, 2019-668 for the Walker County Building Maintenance for a Truck and Landscaping Crew. You'll have a copy of that. This is for a 2013 Zuzu NPR landscape truck. We have a copy of the buyer's order there and also a couple of photos. We've had several of our trucks in our Public Works Road Department that we've had engine failure, transmission problems. It's a very aging fleet, and so we needed to replace at least one vehicle right away. It made sense to get a truck that was set up to properly handle our mowing equipment. So our two mowing guys that go throughout the county and mow all the county facilities, they have a list of about 34 different properties that they have to mow. We're trying to keep them all mowed, many of them once a week, some of them every other week, and so they needed a vehicle that would better accommodate their equipment. So was able to find this truck. It's used, but they were able to take and put us a new custom lawn care bed on the back of it that's brand new, attachment to that truck. Total package, all in, everything is $20,000 even for that truck. Any questions on this? This is also in our budget. We had capital expenditures for up to $100,000 for vehicles and so forth this year under our capital, so this is within that.
Very, very high mileage, isn't it, $232,000?
It is, but it's going to be right here in the county, and for the most time it's parked because they're mowing, so they probably won't put that many miles on it just going from stop to stop.
Diesel?
It's gas. We purposely bought a gas because they don't have all the pollution and smog control.
Because you have a 350 Chevrolet.
But it has a very strong engine. I personally have drove it and was very impressed with the amount of horsepower and takeoff that it has. If the engine goes out in it, we can replace it much easier and less expensive than we would a diesel unit. But we did look at both options. They had both options, and we elected to go with gas. Good point. Okay, item number three, consideration of a purchase order 2019-669 for the Walker County E911 Center. That center has two six-ton heating and air units and one three-ton unit. The unit that has completely failed on us was, the documentation and all of the placards on it shows that that unit was installed in 1992. So I think that's probably when the facility was built. And so that unit has seen its better days. We looked at options of trying to do repairs and consulting with the HBAC company. The efficiency of units have changed so drastically since '92 that they felt like that the difference we would see very quickly in energy savings over the next two or three years to more than offset trying to fix the old unit. Our only problem is, is this unit's on about a five-week lead time. So it's pretty warm up there because the way that system is set up in sections, it's probably hotter in there than it is here tonight.
You're replacing a three-ton?
It's a six-ton.
I know this is six, but are you replacing the three-ton?
No, this time, the three, there's an existing three-ton we're not touching and another six-ton at this time we're not touching. This is just one of the six tons. So this is total price on this. Any other questions on this? We'll sign this purchase order. And again, all of these being capital purchases over $15,000, we make sure we bring these to the public. Okay, we have a Resolution R 008-19, and I'll read this. Resolution requesting sales tax information from the Georgia Department of Revenue pursuant to OCGA 48215D1 and naming designated officer for all related purposes. Whereas Walker County is a political subdivision duly created and valid, existing under the laws of the state of Georgia, whereas the sole commissioner is the county governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. Whereas OCGA 48215, as amended in the 2018, authorizes commissioners of Georgia Department of Revenue here within the DOR commissioner to provide certain confidential sales tax information to the designated finance officer or taxing official of counties and other local governments. And whereas more specifically, OCGA 48215D.1 authorizes the DOR commissioner to provide to the local government designated officer upon request certain information relating to vendors that have submitted sales tax reports in the period of time set forth in this request. And whereas OCGA 48215D1 further allows local government designated officer to request that the DOR commissioner validate from time to time the political subdivision to which sales tax are being remitted by taxpayers with a business locations within the local government boundaries. And whereas Walker County desires to obtain a sales tax information described in the above Georgia Code, now therefore be it resolved by the sole commissioner of Walker County as followed, the sole commissioner hereby designates the following finance or tax official as Walker County's designated officer for the purpose described in OCGA 48215D1. Greg McConnell, CFO, 101 South Duke Street, Lafette, Georgia, 30728. Phone number 706-638-1783. Email address gmcconnell@walkerga.us. Number two, the sole commissioner hereby requests the DOR commissioner or his or her designated furnish the above named designated officer all vendor sales tax information described in OCGA 48215D1 subsection 1 for Walker County for the following time period, July 1, 2018 through March 31st, 2019. In accordance with OCGA 48215D1-2B, the following receipt of the information described in paragraph 2 above the designated officer is hereby authorized to request validation of DOR commissioner of the political subdivision to which one or more vendor taxpayer with a business location in Walker County have remitted sales tax for the designated period with such validation request to continue the business name and location address of each such vendor taxpayer and such other information as assists the DOR commissioner in responding to such validation request. The designated officer shall use the information only in its discharge of his or her duties and shall maintain confidentiality of such information required by OCGA 48215D1. Five sole commissioner and board of commissioners shall comply with all confidential requirements of OCGA 48215D1, including but not limited to requirements that, one, such information may only be discussed by members of the Board of Commissioners in executive session, and, two, members of the Board of Commissioners shall recuse themselves for the such executive session discussion in the event of a conflict of interest as described in the Georgia Code section. Be it further resolved, the resolution shall become effective upon the approval by the sole commissioner and the official name above shall remain Walker County's designated officer for the purpose under OCGA 48215D1 until further action of the governing authority of Walker County. Be further resolved, the Walker County clerk is hereby directed to provide certified copy of this resolution to the Georgia Department of Revenue via email, public-disclosure@dor.ga.gov or otherwise transmit a copy of the resolution as may be directly directed by the Georgia Department of Revenue, so resolved 11th of April, 2019. So what this is, this is a template resolution that was created by the Department of Revenue to enact authorization of them from local government per the legislative change that was made in 2018 by the state legislation and signed by the governor, where local taxing jurisdictions can request the names and addresses of the companies that are reporting sales tax in their jurisdiction. One of the main reasons for this, they want us to cross this database with our existing database and our information. As an example, in some other jurisdictions, they have gone and found out there's been large retailers in their district that they were not getting the sales tax for. So as an example, you have a lot of Wal-Mart's in the state of Georgia. Everything's being filed electronically. All it would take is an invert of one number or crossing of a number, and you could have a Walmart in your county that's paying their sales tax and are remitting it to the state, but it's not coming to your county, it's going to some other county. And so this has created quite an issue across the state where there has been times that when things like this has been discovered, and they go back and correct that, local cities and counties have seen a dramatic deduction in their normal revenue streams, and they, by law, was not able to give any explanation because legislation had never given them that authority. So this way, we can take and get this list and go through it and look at primarily our main larger retailers that we know collect a lot of sales tax that are usually large corporations that deal in multiple jurisdictions and make sure there's at least that location is listed in our database. Also, this will give us a complete database of everyone that is remitting sales tax, so we can use their addresses to send them a letter to notify them that they'll be an existing business in Walker County that by January 1 of 2020, before that date, they'll need to obtain a business license. And so this will give us a database to communicate that, too. So again, the legislation passes in 2018. We've taken this sample document, inserted our information, and we'll be submitting this to the Department of Revenue, and they will only provide us with the information that state law allows them to provide us. Is there any questions on this? Yes?
Was that OCGA 4815D.1? Is that what you read?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding, yes.
And who's going to be the officer in charge here in the county of this?
Greg McConnell, he's the chief financial officer of Walker County, and so that information will be communicated and go to him directly.
Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none will sign this resolution, and our clerk will attest this and send this information to the proper authorities. Okay, we have another Resolution R 9-19, Resolution of the Sole Commissioner of Walker County to Adopt a Member to the Vision 2030 Advanced Team. Whereas Resolution R 3-19 created a Vision 2030 Advanced Team, and whereas the Vision 2030 Advanced Team investigates, researches, discusses, and deliberates actions necessary for the purpose of making recommendations to the governing authority of Walker County concerning issues described in this resolution. And now therefore, it be resolved by the Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that Patty Hart is hereby appointed to the Vision 2030 Advanced Team, and be further resolved that the Sole Commissioner expresses gratitude and willingness of Ms. Hart to serve upon the team, and thanks her on behalf of the citizens of Walker County, so resolved and adopted the 11th day of April, 2019. This brings this team up to seven members. Some of y'all may remember Ms. Hart served on the school board back a few years ago, and she's also employed with Northwestern College. So we're looking forward to her knowledge and experience and her input onto that team. Okay, we have an amendment to a lease agreement on the Sterns Bank building. I'm not going to read this entire thing since it's not a resolution, but I will point out here in this, if you have the packet, explain this a little bit. Back in late 2015, the former administration made an agreement with Sterns Bank to purchase the building at the corner of Highway 95 and 27 in Rock Springs. It currently houses our tax commissioner's office, assessor's office, and our code enforcement's office. At that time, the purchase price of that property was $830,000, which was a very good price for a building of that size. It's probably today worth probably three times that at the lease. At that time, the county did not have the funds to pay for buying that building, so they entered into a rental/lease/purchase option on that building with a 42-month payment schedule with a balloon. Well, on January 1, 2019, the balloon came to the surface. And so the county had been making for the last 40 months or so payments of $6,372 and change every month, and about anywhere between $3,400 to $3,700 of that as the schedule goes through, which we concluded gets applied to the principal and then the rest goes to the interest. So as of January 1, 2019, the balance on the property was $692,020.38. And speaking with one of the senior vice presidents at Sterns Bank out in Scottsdale, Arizona, they had no desire to continue the relationship, even though all the payments had been made, all the terms and conditions had been met. They wanted this off of their books because it was a failed location that was under the scrutiny of the FDIC. So they were being pushed to get this off of their books and so they can move forward. They made a comment to me that their leadership team did not make this deal, and they were picking up the pieces. And I said, "Well, I know how you feel." I said, "Our leadership team did not make this deal, and we're picking up the pieces." So it's quite complicated in Georgia local government of how you can mortgage or finance property, buildings or land, because the state of Georgia does not allow you to go and do a traditional type mortgage like you would as an individual or a corporation. They want you to do bonds, which are voted on by the citizens, or you can do tax anticipation notes, or you do these rental/lease/purchase agreements. Looking closer at our budget this year, we had a light item that we were not going to expend all, expend any of the funds out of because it was funds set aside to cover the shortfall of our splosh tax. The last, I think about three years prior, the splosh had come in short because it had been over projected in the past, and so we were having to take money out of the general fund to cover that shortfall. Well, those payments come due January 1 of every year. This year, our sales tax revenue was up over the last 12 months, and so we had enough funding that we did not have to make that short payment. So we're going to take those funds and use to make a substantial payment on this of $390,000. And then there's an additional $19,500 in the process and fees and associated with doing this from the bank. And then on or before November 1 of 2019, on the second page, we were paid the ending balance, the gross amount of $282,899.79. So on or before November 1, that building will be 100% paid for, and we will own it and we will have a clear deed and title to that. So this allows us to break this into two budget cycles. They needed it paid all in one year in the same calendar year. I said, "Let's work together." I need it in two physical budget cycles so I can plan for this better. We were not anticipating this. And so they agreed to work with us. They knew we had to bring this before a public meeting. The agreement says 15 days after we sign this agreement, and then we will get them the rest of the money and funds by November 1 of 2019. Any questions on this? Okay, so I'm going to sign this. Our clerk has to attest it, and also it has to be notarized, so Charlene Robertson's with us on our team, and she's going to notarize this for us tonight. Got a couple of them here tonight. By the Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, a proclamation recognizing the achievements of Fire Chief Blake Hodge. Whereas Fire Chief Blake Hodge began his career as a volunteer fireman in 1992, and whereas Chief Hodge assumed his role as the fire chief with Walker County on January 1, 2017. Whereas Chief Hodge realigned the fire rescue department to increase the number of 24/7/365 stations from three to six. And whereas Chief Hodge coordinated an insurance service office review of the fire services in the unincorporated area of Walker County and the city of Chickamauga that resulted in the 3/3Y ISO rating placing our community in the top 12% in the nation for fire protection. And whereas, among his many efforts to save lives, improve response times, and reduce property losses, Chief Hodge launched a campaign to install smoke alarms in every home in Walker County at no expense to the citizens. And whereas Chief Hodge has successfully completed the U.S. Fire Administrative National Fire Academy four-year executive fire officer program, and whereas the executive fire officer program focuses on leadership development, lifelong learning, being proactive instead of reactive and utilizing research and analytics to reduce risk among other skills. And whereas Chief Hodge is one of 72 executive fire officers in the state of Georgia, therefore I, Shannon K. Whitfield, Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, to hereby congratulate Chief Hodge on his prestige designation, sincerely thank him for his outstanding service to Walker County and to the citizens. Signed and sealed 11th day of April, 2019. Let's give Chief Hodge a hand. Thank you so much for your service. Want to give you that, and then I've got one more. I'm going to just step off here on the front. This one here is from the state of Georgia, Insurance and Safety Fire Commissioner, proclamation Blake Hodge. Whereas Blake Hodge began his outstanding career in fire service in 1992 as a volunteer firefighter. Since then, he was serving as a full-time firefighter, officer in charge, supervisor, and currently holds the position of fire chief in Walker County, Georgia. Whereas he also has held the position of division chief of training, the Gordon County Fire Department, as well as fire chief and emergency management director in Garden City Fire Department Savannah, Georgia. And whereas Blake Hodge and Walker County Fire Department started a smoke alarm installation program where they will install a smoke alarm in every home in Walker County residence free of charge. Whereas he is honored by the Georgia Safety Fire Commissioner as a recipient of the Fire Fighter Friday, award of his dedication to the fire service through his distinguished career and his initiative with the smoke alarm installation program. Therefore, I, Jim Beck, Safety Fire Commissioner of the state of Georgia, do hereby commend Chief Hodge for his leadership in fire service in the state of Georgia and hold him forth in his example to fire service personnel everywhere. This the 22nd day of February in the year of our Lord, 2019. This is from the state. Congrats, Blake.
Got a few things to say about this one. While my name's on it, it's a little, it's definitely misleading because I don't deserve the credit for this. I asked Chief Linder and Regina Dorsey to be here tonight with us. Chief Linder's our fire marshal, he's over public education and our prevention program, and Regina works in that office. Really, the credit that Chief Linder and I should, that we really get is the fact that we just were smart enough to hire her. So she has been just a tremendous addition to our organization, and I think this year she's approaching, she was out all day today, we're approaching 400 smoke alarms installed in the county to date this year, and it is all because of what she does, and I appreciate you.
Yes, thank you. As always, the first of every month, we try to have our statistical data report. We'll go over some of the highlights here. We had 88 dogs and 23 cats that were entered into our shelter. We were able to adopt out 18 dogs and 12 cats. Rescues took 54 dogs and 12 cats. Turned the ownership for one dog and one cat, and we were successful in not having to euthanize any animals in our shelter in the month of March. We've only had to euthanize a total of five for the year so far. Code enforcement had 40 violations that they wrote citations for, was able to close two cases. Our fire department service calls were down a little bit, but they still had 495 calls that they responded to, and that took 778 pieces of equipment to respond to those. Through the month of March, there was 74 smoke alarms installed, and that gets us through the end of March at 305, and as Chief Hodge indicated, we've probably over the 400 mark already in April. Roadside litter was over 6,540 pounds. Mountain coal farms, it was 96 rental nights. That was up year over year from March last year, it was 48, they had 96 in March this year. Single-family home construction, even though it's wet as February, March were, we still had people pulling permits for single-family homes. had people pulling permits for single-family homes, so there was five in March and nine in February, gave us 21 for the year, which is still pacing about 125 new single-family homes per year in Walker County. We had over 30,000 visits to our website, we patched 1,030 potholes, and hopefully we get our roads paved soon, and we can quit patching so many potholes and get our roads paved. In our valuable service of our transit, we had 2,092 transit trips where we transported our citizens to places that they need to go that was important to them for their daily life. So that's a good report this month. That ends our regular scheduled meeting. At this time, we will open the floor to anyone that would like to come forward, we ask you to come to the podium so we can get you on video, and ask you that you state your name, and then we ask you to limit your topic of conversation to something pertaining to Walker County, we can't fix the international issues or our state issues, but anything dealing directly with Walker County. And then as always, per request of many of you from here that come a lot, we ask each participant to limit their comments to five minutes, to give everyone time, and get us out at a decent time. So who would like to be first? Yes, sir, Mr. Coker?
Hello, my name is Bruce Coker. I'm a member of Corinth Baptist Church in charge of security and serves on the church's leadership team. Corinth been in existence since 1899, serving its community faithfully. July 2015, Corinth Baptist suffered a fire, which has been a very challenging event for all of us. The cause of the fire falls to circuit board inside the ice maker. Fortunately, we have another building we converted into a temporary place of worship. October 2017, we began construction after two years of negotiations with our insurance providing, being given full clearance to start construction, and October 2018, we received a stop work order for issues that had already been looked at, talked about, and weighed by county officials, meaning the fire chief, fire marshal, and planning and zoning. We had been working six months now trying to resolve issues that would not have been a problem if we'd been notified before the start of this reconstruction. The new fire chief is the person to abruptly stop our project, which had been previously cleared by another fire chief. He is asking for a full-scale set of architectural drawings stamped by engineer. Construction drawings for a building that is already a third of the way into construction, which right now we're $417,000 into. We hired an architect and the person was Jack Killian. This is the architect that the county officials referred us to. In order for the general contractor, architect, and the church's leadership to understand exactly what was expected of us, we requested a meeting, we met at commissioner's office. In that meeting was Commissioner Whitfield, county attorney Matt Williamson, Fire Chief Blake Hodge, Fire Marshal Paul Linder, code enforcement David Brown, and Robert Wardlaw, pardon me, Robert, but I don't know what your title is, but Robert Wardlaw was there. From Corinth Baptist was pastor and general contractor R.D. Wallen, architect Jack Killian, Jerry Day, and myself. In that meeting, everything that was discussed from both sides. This entire meeting was centered around fire safety and what to do going forward, not having a big enough water line to facilitate a building sprinkler system. In that meeting, it was ultimately suggested by architect Jack Killian and agreed on that we would come up with, that he would come up with the plans for fire safety. Beyond that, each individual subcontractor would submit a plan or design and plan, submit it to Jack for their respective part of the construction, all subject to county inspections. This was going to cost the church tens of thousands of dollars extra for plans, added firewall, et cetera. We agreed to comply. A few weeks later, Jack produced the plans they requested, which was these plans right And these plans are centered around fire safety. These plans cost us $10,000, which Fire Chief immediately rejected, rendering these plans useless for us or anyone else. Now we're expected to come up with a full set of stamp plans for a building already standing, which will be astronomical in price to achieve. Everyone in that meeting heard what was discussed and agreed to except for me, Jerry Day, Pastor Wallen, and Jack Killian. Now we're just out $10,000 and haven't driven another nail. All the while, our building is being exposed to the elements. There have been multiple meetings since then between county officials, Pastor Wallen, and Jack Killian. Now due to these events, the city of Lafette has agreed to expedite an already planned project to run an eight-inch main, seven-tenth a mile from Cordell Road to Corinth Road going down Coffin Springs, in which the commissioner agreed with the city to pay half of the expense. The conditions were that we agreed to put in a water sprinkler system which will cost the church $100,000 to do. A meeting took place about a month ago where the agreement was made, in that meeting was Commissioner Whitfield, Robert Wardlaw, Pastor Wallen, and architect Jack Killian. Jack took detailed notes on the agreement, Jack produced these agreements the next day to what was agreed to, and sent them to the commissioner. Now we learned that we have been turned over to the state fire marshal's office. It appears now, from the letter we just received from the state fire marshal's office, we will be on the hook for in excess of $200,000 before we drive another nail. With all the problems we have in our county, they chose to take a church to task with a $1.7 million church, and it's upsetting me. One day, I will have the opportunity to look at you and ask you, was it worth it?
Anyone else like to speak? Excuse me, anyone like to speak tonight? All right, well, we appreciate all you coming out, sorry, it was a little warm in here tonight as we were getting started, the air come on late, so we'll try to work on that and do better. We will have a meeting next Thursday night, because we have a scheduling conflict at the end of the month, so we're going to have a meeting on the 3rd Thursday, so next Thursday we'll be back here, but we won't be on the 25th. Did you want to speak? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, my apologies. Come on, if we don't want to miss anybody.
I've been away dating them.
You're fine, you're fine.
My name's Walker Coker, and I live on Center Grove Road, and I've seen a sign of splotch intact on Jones Road, which that's a blessing, that's a blessing. And I got a thinking, Center Grove Road going, it's just all black, don't have no white and yellow on it, did you map anything? And I thought, well, they were there, they're going to have to stripe Jones Road, what may wrong with them striking Center Grove Road, which is about a two-mile long.
That's a very strong possibility, since they're going to be right there, we've had another person bring that to our attention about that road, so we're hoping to be able to do that when they start paving, and hopefully they're going to start paving in the next 45 days.
Okay, good. And also, when you turn on Center Grove Road about the second, third half on right, it's probably about that big round, about that deep, it's right where you go through there.
What road was that?
Center Grove.
Center Grove, okay, we'll make another day and get that turned in.
And I seen some folks the other day on the road right above that turn right there, I forget the name of it, anybody there, it's packed it full of black stuff, and I just wondered why they didn't, why they, how they missed that?
Yeah.
It's to get up, they had to go across that to get to that other, you know, but I just wondered about that.
Yeah, we'll get that taken care of.
Yeah, all right, appreciate it.
All right.
Because we have some older folk on that road, matter of fact, about 96-year-old that goes to Center Grove Church, three times a week, and they're big trucks, they blind them, and you know how they run bright lights, and so they need to be something done.
All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Coker.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work.
Yes, thank you, sir. All right, well, that concludes our meeting tonight, everyone be safe, and we'll look forward to seeing you back here next Thursday, y'all have a good evening.